So today, we're going to be covering lifecycle management, cluster management. Let's start from the top. And before we jump into it, I wanted to go over the different lifecycle management strategies that are used in Kubernetes. This will be your deployment strategies and they will affect how your pods are being replaced inside of your cluster. So the first one is going to be recreate, which is going to be the, it's just going to recreate all of your pods. You don't really, people don't usually like using this one because of the fact that it's going to cause downtime because all of the pods will go down and then be recreated with the new, the new image or however, whatever changes you, that you made. The most often used from what I've seen is the rolling updates where you can specify how many pods can be down at one time. And it will go through replacing the pods, therefore always leaving some of the pods online so that you don't have, the user does not see any downtime with that, with that strategy. The next one is going to be your blue and green strategy where you'll have two separate instances of your, of your application and you would just be, once then, you're able to test one of the instances and the other one being your live production instance. And then, once the testing is ready to go to production, you would just switch the DNS entries and start routing traffic to the, what used to be your staging. And now your production is going to become your new staging, so then you can go ahead and make any changes there. When using the blue and green strategy, there's also kind of a, I found these to be like, like sub-strategies where they, they're still blue and green from my understanding, but they have a different way to roll them out. So the first one being Canary deployment, where you select a random, a random or a set of users you, that you're going to be pushing out the new application to. This allows you to test the application before it actually goes live for everybody. That way you can mine out any, any bugs that you have and you don't have those issues that company-wide or organization-wide. And then we have the A and B testing, where it's multiple canaries does, are deployed. So you have multiple instances of the application that you're deploying and you're able to see the differences, how the users are receiving it, or is there any bugs that are being seen by the users? So those are going to be your strategies. Does anybody have any questions on those?
I'd like to add to that, but perfect explanation. If that's alright.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, cool. So yeah, when you all, because you said like random setup users, a lot of times users that are, for example, for me, you know, iPhone, iPhone user, right? So you know, sometimes you can get the beta version of like a new iOS version. Because I elected to wanting to test beta versions, they'll send, send it to those select user will be a user like me, where I'm susceptible to trying those things out and you know, giving them the feedback, oh, this is, this is wrong, this is not working. So a lot of times you want to have a small subset of people or users and you try it out with like, okay, this is going to be 5% of the total traffic. 95% of people won't notice this feature or change. And if everything goes well, it's smooth, you can always just slowly incrementally, you know, get more and more of your, you know, population to switch over. But if it doesn't work, you can quickly roll back and the other users have never even noticed the change in the testing that you were doing.
That's awesome. Yeah, thank you for giving us more light into how it works in live scenarios.
Oh, for sure, for sure.
Yeah, with that, um, we're gonna go ahead and jump into the lab here. We'll kind of go through how we usually do. Alright, so we have deployed a simple web application, inspect the pods and the services. Wait for them to be fully deployed. Does anybody remember how we get the different pods?
K get, right?
Yep.
Get pods.
Then we also get the services here. So we got right now, we have a deployment of four pods plus web service here for the service. This application version one. Okay, so let's go ahead, jump to the next question. What is the current color of the web application? Access the web portal. We can see here, the current application, it is colored blue. And if you refresh, it jumps between the different pods as well as you're hitting the, hitting them. So yeah. Got a blue. Run the script. Okay. It just tells the color. Break the deployment and identify the number of pods that are deployed by the, by it. Does anybody remember how to get more information on the deployment?
Got to describe it. Describe, okay, description or can't describe, yeah, yeah.
Correct. Deployment. Front end. Here we can see the deployment and they're asking us to find the number of pods that are being deployed. And up here, we can see that the desired amount is four. Or container image is being used by the application. We can also get that from the same deployment here, if we just go down to.
Web app color version one.
That's correct. Break the deployment and identify the current strategy. Over here, we can see the strategy type, rolling upgrade.
Update.
Something that is not mentioned here that we can go over real quick is the 25% max unavailable and 25 max surge. I'll have to look up the surge, but here, or maybe if Pat, Pat wants to fill us in. But what I wanted to mention is that 25% max unavailable, meaning that it was only going to let 25% of the pods be down at one time before, before adding the next, for deleting and replacing the next pod.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's just, the max surge is just the inverse. So you can only have 25% of the, the desired amount. So in this case, it will be five pods is the max amount of pods that can, you know, be available at a given time. So it can't go over 25% of that desired amount.
Okay, perfect. I appreciate it.
Of course.
And in this case, if you were to upgrade the application because of that and because we were doing a rolling update, only few pods are going to be taken down before upgrading again. Well, I said the right thing, but I clicked on the wrong one. Alright, let's try that upgrade application by setting the image. So we're going to change the image on this pod on the deployment and see what happens.
So if you changing the image, are you just taking the whole thing down and putting this new image on top of it?
So when we change the image, what it should do according to what a rolling update does is going to replace one of the pods. So each of the pods is going to eventually get replaced with the new image, but it's going to do it one part at a time.
One more at a time, okay.
Down to the image. And we can actually watch it happen. You could pause, W. As it starts terminating one at a time and replacing them all. It will not, it will not replace the next one until one of the, one they placed before has already came up, came back up. Should pass. There's one more, right? It's still not done. So that should be the last one. Okay. So let's go ahead and curl that. Now color green, we'll come over here, we can refresh it and it changes to green. Up to how many pods can be down or upgrade at a time. And as we mentioned earlier, one. Pat mentioned in the chat that we can actually just set the image, we don't have to edit the whole pod. So I am curious. So let's go ahead and try to real quick. I think it's gonna. I'm not going to ask it in this one, but let's go ahead and try this real quick. Case set. Image. When you set the image, how does it know that you're, what deployment, how do you specify the deployment?
So with this one, it doesn't allow you to do like the tab completion for some reason. I always get annoyed with that. But if you do case that image deploy, I just use, yeah, you can do deployment by deploy and then the name of the deployment. So I think it's, it's front end, I believe you guys have it as. But with this, you do need to get the name of the current image. I mean, not the image, but the name of the, the container, which I believe is a simple web app. So highlight the, the simple dash web app. Where's, yeah, a little bit lower under containers.
In the sub, okay.
Yeah, so that's what it's looking for. That's what identifies the actual like the, the container. So set the image of the container of that name. So K deploy front end and then you can put that name of the container. And then equals.
Okay.
Then the actual image, yeah. Because sometimes you may be asked to do this. So you can just do like version three or something like, back to version one, it's up to you. And it may ask you to do this imperatively. So you do it like this. And then you can do a dash, dash, record, but I think that's deprecated in the new version. So it doesn't.
Does work. It's dope. I just said it to the same one because we're going to need it for the next question. And that, that is good to know. That is good to know. And I'm assuming we can find all of this in the documentation as well, if you do ever forget.
Yeah, of course, of course. Sometimes it may just actually don't, don't use the, um, the file. Try, put set image, it probably be more, um, more direct, yeah.
Discussion.
Oh, try the first one. Um, oh wait, I think you went back twice.
I think it's the same one, that, that was another page.
Put set image, so it like broad is, yeah. Oh, you see case that image tied container name equals, yeah.
That's, yep, that's, this is where I'mma look for it. Alright, cool. Thanks, man.
No problem.
Good to know. Alright, so now they're asking us to just change the deployment strategy to recreate and delete and recreate the deployment if necessary. So let's go ahead and edit the deployment. And with recreate, we do not need to specify the max surge and max unavailable. So we're going to go ahead and delete that. Just to verify. Go ahead and do a describe on it. Yep, strategy type is now recreate. So we should be good to go. Cool stuff. So yeah, now we're going to go ahead and set the image to V3 and we can use that command that we used earlier. V3. This should be fine. And then we can K get pods, W. That's too slow. Oh yeah, so now you can see that all of them are being terminated at the same time and they're going to be all recreate as soon as these get terminated. This should be fine because it's just checking the deployment and not the pods. So there they all go and it starts creating new ones and here's our four new ones. So with this strategy, while they, this whole time they were terminating, the user could not access the application. And that's why this is, most of the times that the best strategy to use. And we can curl it, see what the new color is. Should be now red. Like this. Okay. That's all for the update strategies. Next up, we're going to jump into commands. So for commands, as they describe it, a container, when, when the containers are created in Docker, they are created for a specific purpose, which is going to be the command that it's, or the process that is running on them. If no process is specified, any container that is created would then just be, would terminate as soon as it's created. The way they specify the, the process that it wants us to, that the, the container is going to look for is through the command, the commands that are passed to either the Docker container or to the Kubernetes. So we're, we're just going to go into their practice test. They do show in here how you can pass these commands to, to just through Dockers. But we're just going to look at the Kubernetes ones and something I also want to mention is the way they show, the way the, the command is specified, there's an entry point and an argument. The entry point is going to be your actual command, the, a process that is running on the system. And then the argument is going to be your, is going to be your, the arguments that's going to modify that command. So yeah, we'll jump into here and I'll show you exactly what I mean. Alright, so first thing, let's take a look at how many pods are on here. It's in the default namespace, so we don't have to change the namespace. And Ubuntu sleeper is the one pod. And what command is used to run the pod? So we can do that by just describing the pod and seeing what's being run on there. Okay. So here we can see our command. And the first, the first, uh, I would have put this. It'll be the first command that's in here, it's going to, this is going to be the, the command itself and the second line is going to be your very, your argument that's being ran, applied to the command. So sleep 4800 is going to be our command here. And now it wants us to create a pod that's going to run sleep for 5,000 seconds instead. And they gave us a template as well that we could use. So we can go ahead and do. And best way to add the command that I find is specifying it this way, there's a multiple ways that you can write out that array. That's the way that I like to do it. And the first word in your array is going to be your, your command itself. The second one is going to be your argument for that command. The one for 5,000 seconds. And you can specify multiple arguments as well. Go ahead and create it. I won't get into the habit of describing it just to make sure. So for when you take your test, just to make sure that it's the, you create exactly what you wanted to create. Describe the pod. Can see here, sleep 5,000. So we should be good. Then they want us to jump into the next guy and fix whatever issue that's in there. Does anybody see any issue with this YAML file? Anybody? So the issue is going to be, um, you just, we're missing quotations here. Yep. Same way, a little frozen. Let's go ahead and create that pod. That does it with that. And now we're going to update it to sleep for 2,000 seconds. And did not modify anything else. That did the command to 2,000. Now with this, this is one of the commands that we can't update this without completely recreating the pod. So we're just going to go ahead and do that with a K, replace dash, dash, force. Using the file that they give us here. And what this does, it just completely deletes the pod and then recreates, recreates it with the new YAML specifications. I am curious why some things can be modified and some things cannot. I replaced it. Alright, so now it wants us to expect the Docker file that they gave us here. And see what command is going to be running at the startup. So let's go ahead and look at that Docker file. Okay. This is what I was saying earlier is, uh, this is going to be our entry point is going to be the command itself. And we don't have any arguments here. So you see here, Python up, that pie is going to be our command. And they want us to look at Docker file too. And here there are some arguments to that command. So it's going to be Python that up, Python up pie, then the arguments are going to be color red. Okay. They want us to inspect the next guy. This one threw me off a little bit. Because of the fact, we have the Docker file here. We'll, we'll inspect that first. And it does say it was created from the Docker file in this directory. If I go by this Docker file, should be Python up pie, color red. If I remember, this was the wrong answer. Yeah, so let's go ahead and inspect the other file that's in here. There's a YAML file in here as well. Let's go ahead and inspect the other file that's in here, there's a YAML file in here as well. And this YAML file, the command is just color green. But threw me off is. If it's creating it from the Docker file, my understanding is it would either be Python up color red. Maybe still using the same entry point, then it'll be Python up with the new argument here, color green. That is also not the right answer. It's pretty much just saying that it's ignoring the Docker file. Right answer is actually color green, which I, the reason I mentioned all of this is just since we have Patrick here. If you can, uh, if you can shine some light on why this happens, if you know.
I'm not too a hundred percent sure, but what my, what I believe is the Docker file is the, the base baseline. So if there's a, like, for example, a lot of, you know, applications, you may do a, a dash dash, you know, argument. That will supersede any like default settings and that is a default setting within the application. So it looks at and says, okay, I'm going to scratch what I have in the Docker file. And because you have an actual command inside the pod itself. We're gonna go ahead and supersede that and that's gonna be priority, so that's why it's just gonna run this command at startup. That makes sense, so it's not even looking at the Docker file at that point.
Okay.
For that command.
That makes sense. Thanks for the explanation, cuz it's good to know how it actually works and not just knowing the answer.
Yeah, I know, great question, yeah, it is, it's extremely confusing, but, um, no, it's, it's, it's okay, I got those wrong too.
Okay, so, yeah, so I understand now is even though that other command is in the Docker file. It completely ignores it and uses this command when you run this pod. So yeah, we go, we could go ahead and move on. Back to father there, so same thing, we're gonna inspect the ones that the new files here under. Directory three. And here we have a command and argument, Python up pie. Or pink. Come around a container startup. Pretty sure it's gonna be this one, but let's take a look at. What else is in here? There's a Docker file. Python up color red. So the command that's running this, uh, in this Docker file is Python up color red. But it's gonna be superseded by the command that's ran inside of the YAML file, which is sets it to pink. Created part with the, with a grease, with a default color blue that is then changed to green. So we can use their, uh, their file that they actually have here. Go ahead and copy this. Okay. Passing the argument green here. And go ahead and create that. Okay. A little green. Perfect. Okay. That is all for our comments and arguments, does anybody have any questions on the comments and arguments?
Um, I wanna add something to that, but great, great explanation on everything. I, I actually personally struggle with remembering the command and the argument stuff. So I'm a guy that, as you, as you know, Desiree, I'm, I'm all for. Um, doing everything imperatively when I can. So what I typically like to do is do it directly as far as from the command line, so like, you know, create the, the pod or the deployment. And, uh, you know, do the, the dash dash and then following by the command, cuz you can do dash dash command and then. You know, the argument and whatnot. But that works for me personally, cuz I don't remember how, if it's, you know, when it's command, cuz sometimes it doesn't work with the pod itself. I've, I've faced a lot of problems with it, so if you do like a, do a run, do like K run pod, let's like do a quick pod. And you can use like busybox, let's do busybox. You can name it whatever you want, but, um, the, use a busybox image. And then. You can do a, the two dashes. Space. And then you can do like a, do a S shell, so shell minus C. And then space, I believe it's like, see, and again, I might be doing it wrong, but put this one in quotations, put, try to do sleep. Like one day, just Wendy as David.
No commas, no nothing?
Um, no, you just put a, in parentheses, I think that's, I think it might be wrong, but this way. You can still like create commands, and I may be wrong again, I'm, I'm thinking now on a fly. But keep me honest, it probably is gonna say the pod can execute it often, but, um, yeah, let's describe the busy. One day, right? So we see has this arcs, so the whole thing is an argument. But there's not necessarily a shell command, so I don't know if it's gonna work or not, but can you, can we get the status of the pod, is it?
It is running.
Is running? Alright, cool, so it's sleeping, so that's just my way, so there's different ways, there's the command, um, flag, like option that you can use. And then they're just, you can just give it the arguments, um, this way as well, so just to, just different ways to skin the cat. Then you can do dash dash command and then, yeah.
There it is.
That way, and then you can use those other arguments as well, but it's, it's a little different, um.
Yeah, when you run a command, you also have to have an argument, you know? You just put it all in command?
No, in command, you do the dash dash command, then you put in the first part of the command, so this will be like, I guess, like sleep. And then you gotta do arcs, so, and then you can do like a dash. Might do dash H, see if it comes up. I don't know if anything's gonna come up after that, but.
I don't see arcs in here.
You got a thing that comes after the command, it's like one of those things that you need, um, like after, that makes sense?
Yeah, just, uh, I tapped again.
Okay, yeah, nothing, okay. But yeah, it, it's just one of those, um, things, or you can always just go into documentation and, and look in, in, in there and, and do it, but just a, another option to do it. Do it this way, without having a need. To look into the docs maybe.
Looks like it's, um, command and then you can have the command and arguments right next to each other.
Oh, perfect, yeah, right there, help is always help.
And it looks like that, that dash dash without anything after does the same thing as command.
Right, and it, it's less ugly, um, but. The only caveat to that is, as I mentioned, when I did the shell minus C. The command after the minus C has to be in the quotations, or it's gonna give you like errors. So that's the only thing that you have to remember, so, uh, besides that, yeah, it's just gonna do the same thing, and as you see in that one. And when you describe the pod, it didn't have the quotations in, in it, so it's not like it's, you need it for this method, but the other way, when you, um. When you use a command and arguments, I think that's like a requirement for the, um, for the arcs.
Okay, cool. Let me try something real quick, then. Does it have to be lowercase D?
I, I don't know, I, I think it does, but, um, this is how we find out. But terminated.
It's running, terminated.
So yeah, it was an error, so I think it's because of, it's, it's the, the large D, so try it again, um. Yeah, just do the, uh. Let's see. Oh.
Gotta delete it.
And to avoid having to do that, um, Desiree, you can do a dash dash R M, and that will automatically delete it, um. As well, so you don't have to like do manual delete.
Okay.
Let's see what we got now.
A little slow today. It goes, just the one that's pending.
Sounds waiting. It's interesting.
Trying successfully. This looks correct. Let's try. Okay, get pods. It's running now. Yep, running, one day, running, it's not terminated. Yep, okay, that's good to know, good to know, good stuff. Thank you again, Patrick.
I'm worried, thank you as well.
The last one, the last thing we're gonna go over today. Is gonna be our environmental variables. Just go and jump right in, the environmental variable is just gonna be. Your environmental variables that you have in your Linux boxes and this is, we're gonna find a ways that we can pass them through to our containers. Uh, so how many pods exist in the system? Take it pods. There's one pod. What is the environment variable name set on container in the pod? So let's go ahead and describe it and see. So. Down here, we have our environment, and it is app color and it's, it's all in the key value pair, uh, scheme. So our key is app color and our value is pink. And over here is asking for the variable name, which is gonna be app color. And it's gonna be set to pink, the value here, pink. Let's click on this and it is pink. Stuff. Uh, so it's asking us now to update the environment variable to display a green background. So all we gotta change is. The, the value of app color, we're just gonna change it to green. And does anybody remember how we can change? Uh, aspect of a pod? Again, you, any specification that is already on the pod that's running, does anybody remember how we can change it?
It's not described, is it?
Describe will give us, uh, the information of the pod. So Sim, Sim said, uh, we can change it in the deployment, in this case, it's just a pod that's running without a deployment. And we just need to be able to modify it. We can do to modify any, uh, if, if it's a pod or even a, a deployment, we can. We can edit it. Uh, so we're gonna do a Q C T L edit. Uh, pod. Up color. And we're gonna just change. Go yet. Yep, right past it. The value to, it want us to be green. And I have to force replace it. Should be gossip. Do you changes the, to web application UI by clicking web up color tab? So we can just go over here, we can refresh it and it's, it is now green. And should be okay. Okay, so we're gonna get into the config maps now, um, with config maps, it's, um. It's a data file that you can set that will have your environmental variables. And then you can go ahead and apply the, to the pause now already created. So. Let's take a look at the config maps that are currently out here. Take it, config maps. So we got two. That for there be a host from the config map, DB config, and we can look at this config map by describing it. And as you can see here, we have DB host, which is set to SQL one example dot com. And then we have DB name and the port. But what did it ask us for? The host, so SQL one example dot com is gonna be our answer. Uh, we're gonna create a new config map. And you specify, the specs given below. Okay. And. Go ahead and create. Big map. What I did previously is I just, uh, I described this and then I created from that, but we're gonna try to do it imperatively. Just so we know how to make, how to do that.
So I'm talking about.
Yeah. And if I remember, it's something literal. But I haven't written down. Here. So we need a config map, then the name. Give us the name that they want us to use right here. Yes, it does give us how to complete. And this is what we're looking for, specify the key and the literal value. And here shows us how to put it in afterwards, so we're gonna do from literal. Then it wants up color dark blue. Then it wants up color dark blue. And I remember that we can specify multiple of these in the same command. Well, yeah, there goes. Grab this guy. Okay, let's go ahead and describe it just to make sure it's what we wanted to create. Yep, our color set to dark blue and up other is set to disregard. So it should be good. Stuff. And update the environment variables on the part to use only the app color key from the newly created config map. The environment variable on the part, so we're gonna be editing. The same part. I'm assuming it's the the same part that we had before. Web up color. Variable. Change this. Grab it from. Big map. Um just so we know how to find this during the test, let's see if we can find it in here. Our references. And show F, we're gonna do kind. Pod.
Um put a space here in between kind, yeah.
There we go. And. Only from. Interesting. But it's not the way that I seen it done. This other.
You might wanna, okay, configure pod, scroll down. Where it says configure pod, it there's gonna be another link. At the bottom, that gives you a little bit more um examples. I think we had a bottom, yeah, config configure pot to use, yeah, try that one, see that word.
Let's see, this this looks almost the same. Probably does the same thing, but I do wanna see if we can find the environment from. Option, there it goes, yep. The config map reference and then the name. This is all we'll want. And here we gotta just specify the name of the config map. Cheers with that. That looks good to me. Make sure under spacing. Yep, it's good to me. Gonna have to recreate the pod. Get an error, pod inversion, if you want, cannot be handled.
Double check how you um. Look at the um the spacing and everything on the the environment from and everything. So edit the file, yeah, so you can do the the vim, the temp file.
Jay will be spaced one back.
Um try to try to do the inverse. Um. Yeah, go go back to um the page.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, do it exactly like I just didn't avoid any potential um issues on this one.
It's right here, actually.
Yeah, and move the E N V from, yeah, back that one up again too, yeah. To match away image, yeah, there you go.
Think this is gonna. Gonna be here.
There you go. It should be it. Now just do a K create, cuz it already deleted the old one.
Hmm, right. We could pod and we're gonna be handled as pod. On spec, containers of type. That's good.
Oh, I think I know, wait, go go back up, bro. Think I see what it is. Yeah, um E E N V from, put the dash at the beginning of it. Like, yeah, the. Right there, like go go to look at the example and you can see where it says a name. It should be the line with the C, well, the 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 N, yeah.
Okay. Oh, then. The E N V will be under the A?
Um the, well, the dash, you see where the dash is um where the C O N, that dash right there needs to be, yeah, right there, perfect. And that should like get you going.
So. Can you explain why you saying the E N V from needs a dash in front of it?
Well, yeah, because that's the first. Cuz you know, under the containers, you can have multiple containers and it's just saying that this is the first container. So yeah, delete one. So you can have another container. Usually we have it lined up with name, web app color, but since it's, it was created like this. Um. We need that to identify and let let the pod know. That this is where it starts and these are all the contents related to this container that we're creating. Um named web app color has this image cuz you can have another pop, you can have another sidecar in there. And that just is indicating that that's a list of things.
We're gonna take a quick pause here as Patrick did a great job explaining why we need a hyphen in front of the E N V from. I just wanted to add to that that um. The reason why we need that is uh as he mentioned, it is a list and the pods, they they can create a multiple containers within themselves. And they they are separated uh as a list uh by commas. And the way that uh YAM files will list the will list the list is used by using those hyphens. So that's that's gonna be your delimiter. So every time there's a new section of the list, it's. We'll put a new hyphen in front of it. So in this case, uh that was the first container that I was creating. And we needed to put a hyphen at the start of the speci- specs for that container. So the pod would know that this this is where we're starting at. Uh again, uh if you've made it to this at this point, I would appreciate if you liked and subscribe and let's get back into the video.
Yeah, makes sense.
In that case, does it need to be the environment from, does it need to be underneath the name of the container?
It doesn't care how it's set up. In this case, because he had the envy from at the top. Um, we just needed to have it there. Uh it might have been deleted when you were, when you pasted it, but it and then. That should work now. That should be perfect right there.
Hold up. Everything I should line up is my understanding.
Yeah, yeah, I. Think I think we're good.
We'll have to move this over here.
Oh, yeah. The ends, yeah, matched up, yep.
Yep, I've given that a shot.
Wait, did line twenty two? Did not find expected indicator. Um. Do shift, do press shift colon. Twenty two? So back that one up. One. I thought they all lined up. No. Yeah. No. I think. Okay, so E N V from. Go back to the example, E N V from. The ends and ends name. It's gonna be good, so E N V from. The V N S C connect and the N and N connect. V and C, N and N.
Let's try this, yeah. This doesn't need this this dash anymore there.
Ye- yeah, so the yeah, the name should be under the N under config. So space it like two.
That's where I had it.
No, you know what? The E N V from, it should that the dash should be by the, is it by the C? This is where. Because the image, the image and that, those still should line up, you know what I'm saying? Like it should line up like that.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
Interesting, I'll have to look into that more. Can you describe? Color. Checking the config map. Uh, here it is right here. Uh so we should be good. Like it. It's not, did I name it incorrectly?
Yeah, let's let's get config maps and see what it shows. Web app. Dash and big dash map, yeah. Default namespace. Wanna try and delete it and recreate it? That's weird though, I don't know why it wouldn't work, that's odd. Yeah, the name, exactly how it is.
What they wanted us to do.
Value from, oh, they wanted to, they didn't want you to actually upload the whole config map. Uh I see what I mean.
Specify that? Oh, it does.
Oh, the app color. Okay, yep, it's, yeah, we 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 looked right over overlooked it.
Yep.
And that's the actual difference. I know you were asking, what was the difference between those two? Um. The difference is you don't have to upload the entire config map, but you can take what you need. And if you only need the app color and not the other stuff, um you can use that that option versus in importing the entire config map.
Okay. You go ahead and um. I wanna.
Good job.
Check that out real quicks. But that's that's what we saw over here. Oh, cuz they just add the key underneath it.
Mm hmm.
Here it is right here. If you're looking for on the test, it's the next one down, you can specify which um exactly which one you want, what you wanna grab. Cue the jeopardy music. I capitalize it.
So there's a name, you see where it says name, value from, config map reference key.
Yeah, the config mark reference name.
So copy up from under command. E N V all the way down to key.
Oh, that's what it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mm hmm.
Where's the name coming from?
Well, that, uh, once you set it up, I'll explain so you're not getting confused as I explain it. Um, I'll, I'll break it down for you, don't worry. Probably recommend doing a set paste, sometimes that works better when you're pasting from their um, document. Cuz it's so much, it's so easy to make mistakes with testing.
Yeah.
From, yeah, those are lined up. And. Yep. And then we still have to add that the E N V needs to have that dash in the beginning of it, under the C.
Change this. Okay. Name coming, where's the name coming from?
So, so you're, the name is gonna be app color.
Is it the container name?
No, just app color, that, the name would be variable.
But it's the same exact.
Yep, the same exact one, yep. So to break it down for you, so the in, so E N V, right? So name, the, the first one where it says app color as far as under E N V, that is what's gonna actually appear in the. Um, in the container itself, when you go under the environment variables, when you type in E N V in that um, container. It's, it's gonna say app color. So the app color, the environment, environment variable name is that. And then it's gonna get that value from the, the config map. Um, key of app color. So you can, the key and the name and the environment, say I wanted it to be just called color in the container. I can name it can color, but the config map key reference is gonna be under. Um, app color, which is gonna be whatever color we have in the config map reference to that key. And it's gonna give me that value. So you may not want it to always be the same name and the reference. So I may name it whatever, but it's still going to point towards whatever is in that value of the, the config map. App color, that makes sense, does, does that make sense? Uh, I'm probably saying a lot of.
No, you, you, you explained it perfectly, so like, yeah, this is gonna be what's the, the, the. The container is pulling this environment variable for its uh, key app color. And it's gonna grab from the config map, the key app color and he's gonna grab the value of the key app color.
Exactly, you can name that whatever you want, but whatever you name it up there is that name is what you, when you search up E N V. And that container is gonna pull whatever is located in that um, config map key reference. So yeah, exactly right.
Yeah, I appreciate that, that you explained it perfectly.
Thank you.
Let's hope, let's hope it works. I just need to create. Yep, there it goes. You describe.
And before you move on to further emphasize it so people understand this, do a K exec minus I T. And then put in um, web app color, um, yeah, I think it's just web app color and then dash dash. Space, E N V.
Stack uh. App color.
You see where it says app color?
It is.
Now. That's pretty much where it's saying, hey, this is the environment variable. Um, and this is where it was, but did, did we have it as dark blue in the config map?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, uh, awesome, so yeah, you see it, that's what it's pulling, so we change that config map to something else. Um, and we re-upload the um, container, it's gonna show whatever is labeled app color in the config map.
Okay, perfect, and for anybody that is not aware that we just sort of did an interactive shell for web app color. Container and run the command E N V, which pulls the environment variables for those um. For that container.
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah, man, thanks, man.
No problem.
Perfect. The changes in the UI, so let's go refresh, it's now dark blue, perfect. Alright, that is all I had for today, do we have any questions? I know I had some, uh, thank you Pat again for answering them um, on the. Config maps and environment variables for Kubernetes.
Great session, man.
Uh, as always, if anybody is watching this on the replay and you found this info valuable, please like and subscribe. If you're looking to join the study groups, uh, just shoot me a message on LinkedIn. Uh, I have the link in the description, uh, thank you for watching and I will see you on the next one.